Could be a glitchy night for everybody. All right, so let's roll call in. Maren?
Aaron Goldstein here.
Marissa?
Marissa Crary here.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt here.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia here.
And I see the mayor. Thank you, mayor.
Hello.
Hi, can we're all calling in?
Oh, Mayor LaChapelle here, sorry.
And Cindy Kuzinski here. Good evening and welcome to the November 9th School Committee meeting. I would like to make a couple of quick announcements. One is our next meeting will be December 14th. And the other is congratulations to Mayor LaChapelle on her reelection. And a congratulations to our two new school committee members who will be sworn in in January. Megan Harvey and Ben Hershey. So we are really going to miss Marissa and Jonathan. However, I feel really confident and positive about Megan and Ben being on the team. So I welcome them and I thank everybody for their votes and their participation in this process. So, do we have any correspondence?
We just have one piece of correspondence for tonight from Lisa Hibbert, who was writing with concerns about the earlier start time for her elementary school children.
And do we have any gifts?
We do. So I would like to make a motion to vote to approve with gratitude and appreciation the generous monetary donation from Karen Doyle to the Maple Elementary School for the library.
I second that.
Okay, Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Crary, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Mayor? Mayor LaChapelle? Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
Sorry about that. My apologies.
Thank you. All right, that's okay. I had problems tonight myself. Great. Dr. Leclerc, do you have any other announcements before we go to public speak?
I do, thank you. Just a few quick ones. I will probably mention this again, but just to let everyone know, we will be holding a vaccine clinic for children ages five to 11 on November 12th from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. And again, on December 3rd from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. That's for the second dose. That will be at East Hampton High School. And if parents are interested, they should look on our webs, on our, not our website, our social media, or check out the message that went home to families yesterday. And I believe children brought home flyers today. So the clinic is filling up fast. We have almost 100 children signed up already. So just wanted to let everyone know that. We are still desperately seeking substitute teachers and lunch monitors. We have a severe shortage and we have no substitutes at our elementary schools, pretty much at all. So if we have anyone that's interested, please reach out to Central Office. And finally, we are still seeking middle and high school parents for our strategic planning focus groups. Please contact Jean Libby, our family engagement coordinator, if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to open a public speak. I'm going to ask that if you want to speak, you introduce yourself and keep it to three minutes. So please signal now. I do not see anybody. Who wants, going twice? All right, I'm going to close public speak. Okay, Kayla, you're going to be up. Student representative update.
Hello, I just have a few quick updates.
Aaron, did you have a problem?
You just skipped presentation. I thought you were doing Jeff, but we can go.
You are right. Oh, thank you so much. I did skip.
All right, Kayla.
Kayla, we have to, we're doing a presentation first, then you're up. My apologies.
That's fine.
All right, thank you, Maren. Okay, so Dr. Leclerc, do you want to make that introduction? I see Jeff here.
Yep, this evening we have Jeff Bag, our city planner here. He was here last time giving us kind of a big picture view of some sidewalks and enhancements that were proposed for the Mountain View School area. And Jeff is going to be presenting a little bit more information this evening. And he is seeking a letter of support from the school committee. So Jeff, welcome, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and sorry to interrupt the previous speaker there. Thanks for having me again. I came to the last meeting and, you know, we did a quick overview of some of the work that the planning department is doing, kind of on behalf of the whole city. There is a really important grant opportunity that's coming up on December 1st through the Safe Routes to School program. And I think, you know, the cities and the schools' participation in that program, you know, over the past couple of years is important. And I thank Laurie Garcia for a lot of her work to coordinate a lot of those events. That is kind of like a requirement for us to be eligible for these grants. And so it's good to know that we are eligible for this. And so the infrastructure grants cover, you know, improvements, enhancements, or new ways for students to walk and bike to schools. And so, you know, we've talked about this a few times as groups that, you know, relocating our pre-K through eight to Whitebrook, you know, it introduces a lot of really great opportunities. There are a couple of challenges that we're trying to kind of face head on. And, you know, the planning department has been kind of looking at this since 2018 with overarching plans and sort of a vision. And so we've been working on some feasibility studies to look at alternative routes to the Mountain View School. And for a while, we were looking at this route that would take you from the rail trail up a side street, kind of entering the backside of Non-Tuck Park. So it's a Hisgin Avenue. And we were exploring that. It's a longer route, and when we got the study back, you know, there are some challenges there, including the cost, which seemed significant. And, you know, we feel like that is still really important information that we'll have available to us in the future. But I think in the meantime, we've shifted to look at Park Street as sort of the other, you know, that's a primary route now for people to get from either the downtown Williston or the rail trail up to the, to the school. So that is going to be the focus of the grant that we're looking to submit on December 1st. And I will put up a map in a moment, but one of the key features that we're trying to flesh out is the ability to build a handicapped accessible path that would go from the man hand rail trail up to Ward Avenue. And it would bring you from the rail trail to Park Street. And the folks at Mass DOT and in general conversations with them think that that's a really valuable piece of the project. And a lot of the conversations we've had is that the rail trail, you know, East Hampton is unique to have it. We're really happy and blessed to have it. But it's, it traverses the town kind of across. And the benefit of that is that people in other parts of the city can access the rail trail. And then if they can get along the rail trail and safely to Mountain View, we'll actually have done something that's really important, which is make these connections. So the couple of the neighborhoods that I, that I think about and then we talk about are like the New City Neighborhood or the Pleasant Green Neighborhood, which are kind of around the Mill District. They have ready access to the rail trail. And if we can build this connection that would provide the safe route from the rail trails to the school, then, then we'll be able to bring people from across the other side of town to the, to the school without a car. So as Dr. Leclerc said, I'm here to solicit, you know, the, the school committee's support. What would I be asking for as a letter? I don't know if it got transmitted to the committee. It was a little bit late. It came today. But there, there is a draft available to share. But first, I just wanted to show the route and a quick map, just to get everyone oriented. So the map here, you should see a couple of different colors. The red represents, you know, Williston Avenue, which goes up along the cemetery, hooks down, and then that kind of creates the, the car entrance to Non-Tuck. The orange path here traverses the Phillips Manufacturing Company's parking lot, which is really its common route right now for people to cut across that parking lot and then up Hisgin Avenue and kind of around the entrance to Daily Field. That was the route that we were primarily looking at for quite a while. And Williston kind of, you know, was communicating with us for, for a couple of years. And then they recently said that they do not really want, they wanted us to go around. So we, we kind of diverted that path into Non-Tuck. And it brings you down into Non-Tuck. There's a first pavilion where we would take a right and get to the first baseball field and then come down at the back of the school. It's actually a reasonable trail network, and especially the part from Non-Tuck to the back of the school is utilized. But the cost estimates that we have right now for this are between $3 and $4 million, which exceeds sort of the Safe Routes program, you know, the, the limit right now is $1.5 million. And, you know, given some of the constraints, the potential distance, that this, this is a little bit longer and a little bit less intuitive. And then, you know, we, we've been gathering feedback from people. And there was, there was a fair number of people who thought that before we venture off into the woods and create a new path that doesn't exist today, like that we should really focus on our existing infrastructure and the existing sidewalks and kind of the Park Street route, which is probably what most people would assume would be the path to the school. So in light of that, we shifted focus to the yellow, the yellow line here. This, this hook down here by Ward Avenue is pretty, it's a pretty critical piece of the puzzle. Our landscape architecture firm that we're working with has taken a preliminary look at this and thinks it's feasible to bring a gentle sloping path from the rail trail up to Ward. And that's that key connection that if we can make that and incorporate it, you know, one of the criterias of Safe Routes is to increase the number of students who would be likely to use the path. And that's, that's, that's the critical way we would do it. Then the sidewalks along Park Street are, are historic. So that's a fancy way of saying they're pretty old. They don't meet ADA compliance. They're, they're narrow. And although in some places they're set back from the road, which is really, that's a, that's a total benefit. As you get closer to the school, the sidewalks are basically right at the back of the curb. And that's, you know, that's a standard that we would try to be making better by kind of separating the sidewalk from the road, the traveled lane. And so that's a criteria that, that Safe Routes supports. And so the idea would be to bring the project to the, the limit of the roundabout, where if you're familiar, you know, the school constructed a 10-foot wide path all the way in. So that's kind of the target that we're shooting for. I did want to, I have been kind of going around. So I went to the rail trail, the rail trail committee last night, and they are very supportive of this idea. The important thing I think I would say for the, the school committee, the school administration, and anyone who happens to watch this is that we're definitely looking out, you know, four, four years from now. The process to, to go through with Mass DOT is, is extensive. But this is a, there's a lot of design, you know, issues with Park Street. So there's significant old trees that we want to, our first attempt would be to preserve the old trees and carve a path that, that preserves as many as possible. And then there's a lot of private property. So a lot of people own property on Park Street, obviously. And so we, those years get spent kind of advancing the plans from 25, 50, 75, and 100% design. But I did want to project that this is not immediate. But the, the size of this grant at $1.5 million is very much worth pursuing right now. Our expectation is we would know whether or not we, we've been awarded the grant, maybe in February or March. And if we were awarded, we would be lucky. It would, it would really show that we are advancing this project forward. If we're not awarded, we will get their feedback and we'll understand, you know, the pros and cons of what we've put forward. And, and part of that might push us back to the Non-Tuck route. You know, if, if they come back and say that it's just not feasible, then that would give us this, you know, test, we've tested the, the scenarios. And that would be important to kind of talk to the general public about the scenarios that we've, we've looked at. And then all of this is to say that we have a lot of work ahead of us. So, you know, the other area that we need to look at in the future is, is the plains. You know, we did the work with Safe Routes and they did the student address map. And so we have a large concentration of our student population that lives in the plains. And they would be traversing, you know, either the sidewalk on Line Street or some other path. So we would also be looking at that. And we're working on South Street is a little bit of a hotspot right now. We're trying to connect the sidewalk over there to fill that gap. And then we're looking at the rail trail crossings as well for safety improvement. So we kind of have multiple things going on at once. But this is by far the, the kind of the biggest that we're, we're going to aim to try. So I think with that, you know, I don't know if Dr. Leclerc, if we have access to the letter, if anyone wants to see that, but the idea is that we're looking for as much community support to go in with the application as possible.
I did forward it to everyone via email while you were talking, Jeff.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm happy. Do you want to put it up on the screen or do you want me to put it up on the screen?
If you have it, it would be better. I don't, I did not pull it up before I started my, my meeting.
I can do it right now and you can, you can talk about it. I'll make it a little bit bigger.
Yep, so I'm trying to acknowledge in the second paragraph that, that the school committee, the school department, and many others have been hard at work at facilitating, facilitating the construction of the school. It's really a transformational project that we all should be proud of. It's been mapped as a community need since 2008, at least 2008. And it really is going to be one of the, the single most substantial changes for us in the evolution of our city. I'm trying to say that we're being thoughtful and that goes back to the 2018 planning work that we've been doing, but aggressive, to try to upgrade this key route. We are looking to substantially increase the number of students who choose to walk and bike. I think we, we need to kind of face together that we're shifting away from the three downtown schools. But that highlights an opportunity to provide equal access to improved pedestrian access from the rail trail. You know, I think where we try to always kind of put this compelling reason why we want the grant, so without, without the improvements, the students will be forced to rely solely on buses and automobiles to get to the school. Or, you know, that, there a little bit, this could be a massage, I guess. Or they would be subject to potentially unsafe conditions on that sidewalk. The department and committee remain committed to continuing, continuing the Safe Routes activities, the walk, bike, and roll events. And I did want to make sure that, Laurie, maybe this is to you, but my understanding is there has been discussion about bringing some of the Safe Routes to Schools education materials into the curriculum. And I guess we should fact check that before we sign up on the letter. But the rest of it is kind of standard boilerplate kind of summarizing.
Thanks, Jeff. Yes, I did bring that up in the spring. And I even mentioned that Lucy went forward and was able to get PDPs for any of our teachers who learn the curriculum to be able to teach. It's really, everything is prepared. Dr. Leclerc, do you remember? I brought that up in a meeting and I think Julianne was on. And it's something that would really be good for our health classes or our phys ed classes in K through four. It's for younger kids and it won't take a lot of time. And it will also be good for the teachers because they'll have the materials, learn it, and they can actually get PDPs for it. Does that sound feasible?
It does sound feasible. I can look into it. I don't know if they've been doing that already, but I can look into it.
Okay, it's materials that Safe Routes to Schools already has, and it's a set number of hours. So Jeff, I, I think that we did talk about it. I'm sure we talked about it. And I think Julianne was open to it, and Dr. Leclerc can follow up with that. So I thank you for doing all of this. And would you like me to make a motion to see if the committee will vote to support the letter? Are there any questions beforehand that anybody has? I have another question that's not regarding the letter. So I think we could do the letter first, and then I wanted to ask Jeff a question. Are there any questions about this?
Well, I think I would just make a question slash statement. I mean, this, this is demonstrating that we are in process, right? We've, we've looked at one route. The route seems to not be in question now. So now we're sort of pivoting to another route. That, that route through Non-Tuck may not be the best route because of costs. So now we're pivoting to a third route, sort of trying to find out what's going to be the best. And this is just supportive, supporting additional feasibility studies to make sure we make the best choice for city and for funding, right?
Yeah, and if I understood you correctly, I mean, we've been charting these out for a while. And I think it's, it's a little close to the deadline, I will admit. But I think it's become clear that the Park Street route is the best fit for this funding source at this time. So, you know, we will also, so at the tail end of that was some other funding sources that, you know, I, I can see the, this idea of pursuing some other funds to connect the back of the school to Non-Tuck. But it's a better fit for the Mass Trails program, where they're looking for that last missing connection piece to add. So I think at this time, this is the best, this is the best avenue to pursue. And I think the other feasibility studies are not lost. You know, I was just reading today, like this, the, the discussions of infrastructure bills and additional money coming forward for various projects and purposes. The feasibility study will always exist. And I think we will, you know, we'll reconsider it, especially if we don't get this round. You know, it's, it's valuable information that we have.
Any other questions?
I think you've more or less answered the only question I really had, which was why was the park so cost prohibitive? But I understand, you know, you have to, I think, create a lot more from scratch than you're going to on Park Street. So that makes sense. It's a little disappointing to think that, you know, kids are going to be walking down the busy street instead of through nature. But I certainly hear your perspective and desire to continue to explore that connection. And I think, you know, having Mountain View as close to Non-Tuck as it is, that making that, you know, geographically, I mean, making that connection is still valuable in the future. But I certainly respect and appreciate, you know, the work that you've done to figure out what makes the most sense for this funding.
Thanks. And I know this committee wants to move on. I, I think the, the thing about the, the Non-Tuck route is there's a lot of road reconstruction. And there's a lot of utility relocation. And those, those two things are not eligible for funding through Safe Routes. So it increases the cost for the city. Whereas Park Street, you know, it's, it's mainly just making the sidewalk bigger. There, there may be a section closer to the school that we do talk about road changes, but it's much more limited. So that, I think, the presumption is that's going to reduce the cost. And I think nothing would say that we do Park Street and then we don't do something else in the future. I think just the, the very logical conservative people, you know, would, would normally expect us to fix the existing infrastructure we have. And I think we need to, you know, I'm really, I was hearing a lot of that, you know, in the past couple of weeks about people really expecting that to happen first. And so the way that I work is we'll get this in motion. And then I think we'll pursue these alternative routes kind of in the next few years as we go.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Laurie?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that we sign on to this letter of support to Mass Department of Transportation's Safe Routes for Schools.
Nice second thought.
All right, any more discussion? Okay, Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Crary, aye.
And Cindy Kuzinski, aye. All right, thank you, Jeff.
Can I just ask that one question?
Absolutely.
And Jeff, I'm sorry, but I haven't had a chance to go look at what somebody told me about, because it was just two days ago. But one of my neighbors was expressing grave concern that where the new roundabout is and the sidewalk is, the embankment that goes down has no guardrail and there's just gravel there. And they were expressing, as I said, concern that it's very dangerous because it's narrow enough without having any type of barrier that kids could fall down there. Do you know where I'm referring to?
I do know where you're referring to. And I guess I would ask Dr. Leclerc, my understanding is the school building committee has, has talked about that. And I would, I would ask Dr. Leclerc first. I, I know it's just enough to be dangerous, so.
Yeah, I, we have our fence going in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Well, thank you. All right. I apologize, Kayla, now on to our student representative update.
It's fine, no worries. So I just have a few quick updates for everyone. First off, our homecoming dance will be this Saturday, the 13th, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And student council members will be setting everything up that day from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. We are currently on our second day of Spirit Week. So Monday was Country versus Country Club Day. Today was Decade Day. Tomorrow will be Anything But a Backpack Day. And Friday will be our Class Color Day. As of right now, 12th grade is in first place. 9th grade is in second. 11th grade is in third. 10th grade is in fourth, and staff members are in fifth. Student Council is also finishing up planning for a school-wide trivia game that will take place during the last hour of school on Friday. Students will go back to their homerooms and each homeroom will count as one team. We will be using a trivia game platform called Gym Kit, which if anyone's ever heard of Kahoot, it's very similar to that. And student council will have a Zoom meeting during the game to monitor all the teams and have tech support if needed. The winning team will gain spirit points for their grade and other prizes are being thought of at this time. And finally, student council is considering extending our food drive for the East Hampton Community Center into next week as well, so that we'll be able to accept more donations for them. That is all that I have at this time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Spirit Week is always such a blast. So how far are you thinking of extending? Are they thinking of extending the food drive, how long?
Into next week, probably the whole week.
Okay.
We're just thinking of doing this because obviously Spirit Week takes up like a lot of, you know, people's, people are just thinking of Spirit Week a lot. So they're not necessarily thinking about a food drive as much. So we thought that if we push it out for another week, we'd be able to get more donations.
Yeah, that's a really nice idea. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, do we have a policy update? All right, I know we have a finance subcommittee update. So, Maren?
Yes, we do. Give me one moment, please. Okay, so we did just recently meet. And I think in your packet, there is a little bit of information in that. Did that, let's see where that is.
It was shared out with the agenda, so if you can find that email.
Yep, so in your packet backup, there is... I guess, so first the meeting notes, don't worry about that. So I just want to first go a little bit into, it's on page four, which is the FY21 End of Year Spending Analysis. So just wanted to cover a little bit of that. That overall, you know, spending was dropped significantly, but we were able to meet sort of all of our state requirements in terms of net school spending. And, but overall, the spending did drop significantly, $4.7 million because of COVID last year. So we were able to, a number of different things, let's see, I just want to, the, you know, we are required to meet our circuit breaker, and so that that funding was carried forward to cover those requirements. One of the things that I want to point out on this piece of information, though, from our choice funding, is that it looks like right now that we have a $2.1 million balance. But actually, that is, includes a significant amount of funds that are already earmarked to go out. Those are funds that are covering staff stipends that were, or salaries and such that were increased last year after the negotiation, as well as increased for, let's see, yeah, primarily for the union negotiation pieces. So that's both last year and this year that still need to be brought forward, because we're just in the process of finalizing the signatures on those things. And so there's a significant amount of money there that is going to just quickly go be spent out to our staff and teachers within the union contract. A number of the other funding sources that came in and out, you know, we don't have to go through all of these. Chapter 71 is bus fees, chapter 44 is turnaround, lost book fees and things like that. So there were some funds that were collected and some funds that were then turned around and spent. I think the biggest piece that's sort of ongoing right now is obviously transportation is very much a topic. There's the advantage that we have right now is that we are right now heading into putting out a contract on transportation. And so that will be going out, we're sort of there, the current transportation company is actually doing analysis for us, with us around the new school and the impact that that's going to have, starting next September. And so they're doing those analysis in terms of number of students, fleet size, routes, things like that, as it shifts into from the elementary schools to the Mountain View school. So they're doing that work right now, and then we anticipate getting that back and then being able to turn around and put that out for the next three-year bid for the contract and hope to get some good interest from the area. So that we can have, you know, get a good rate for what's coming. Obviously, we're seeking to increase probably a number of buses, and so that's going to increase costs as well. So that's sort of the big piece that's sort of coming out of the annual analysis. And then in terms of this current first quarter, things are pretty much on track, and things are, most things are working out as anticipated. So nothing, nothing major to bring forward at that point.
Thank you.
Is there any questions that anybody has? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have a collaborative update?
Just that we're scheduled to meet next week, and I anticipate that will be the last month of the year.
Next week, and then there's not a December?
It's usually every other month anyway, so they'll meet again in January, and I'll make sure you folks are ready to send somebody to it.
All right, COVID advisory update.
We have not met since the last time the school committee met, but our COVID cases continue to be low, if not nonexistent, and we have no in-school spread. It's all from families, so things are going well.
Let's hope it stays up there. Do we have a safety update?
No, we don't at this time.
Okay, and a wellness update?
There's no wellness update. I would just like to say right now, because the public does realize that Shannon Dunham has been seriously ill, and we all are praying for her, and the community support is wonderful. So I don't want to speak to details right now, but she isn't present, as people can see. So if anyone has any specific questions or concerns, they could reach out to one of us via email. And there are Facebook groups and GoFundMes and a lot going on. But I do want to recognize that we do miss her dearly, and we await her return, and we're praying for her.
Thank you. Okay, superintendent update?
Thank you. So the only thing I have on the agenda this evening is a brief presentation on my goals. So let me bring that up, and let me just switch. And not to be deceiving, it says district goals. And so my goals are normally the district goals, the mayor of the district goals, and they're also the goals of the administrative team. So it's kind of a trickle-down of, kind of a trickle-down process. So my goals are not simply my own, but they are for the entire team. And just a reminder that we push them out. These goals, you'll see some redundancy to previous years, because goals are not usually something that are quickly accomplished, but rather big-picture ideals. So these are multi-year goals, and what will change each year are some of the action steps and benchmarks as we move through. So let me share the first goal. The first goal is something that this team has, this committee, rather, has emphasized in the past, and I think that we've noted publicly, it's a big challenge in our schools right now, the idea of social-emotional learning. So it really was imperative that we have a goal that the entire district is working on around social-emotional learning. So the goal is to identify and develop an action plan to best address student needs in the area of social-emotional learning through a multi-pronged approach, including staffing, including curriculum, and including practices. I didn't include all of the action items. There are 10 action items this year on a separate document that I'll share with the committee. But things, some things we've already talked about, such as the creation of an SEL position in our schools for next year, funded through ESER funds, not through the community. But we really feel it's extremely important, so we've been spending time this year talking about it, what it might look like, how it would work. We've just recently created a job description. We will be going out and posting it soon, as we are also posting associate principals for our leadership team at the pre-K through eight school, even though they won't be appointed until July 1st officially. We want to get our leadership team in place so that they can begin to do all of the things they need to do to prepare to go into that building on July 1st. Things like curriculum, we have a caring schools community curriculum. That's a very strong curriculum in our elementary school second step. So to keep those curriculums going forward, to make sure that our teachers have the tools they need to ensure that the curriculums are successfully delivered to students, and practices and procedures, how we're addressing some of the trauma-informed students, not trauma-informed, some of the traumatized students that we have in school since the pandemic, what kind of strategies we're putting in place, what kind of staffing patterns we're adopting in order to deal with some of the challenges that we're having in the classrooms. We've increased our staffing around counselors, particularly with River Valley and James Levine. Not only are they in our schools, but they're providing professional development to staff and strategies to individual teachers on how to work with students. So it's a really large, kind of all-encompassing goal. But I think it is, it's the number-one goal because it is really the number-one issue in schools today. The trauma that children have experienced through the pandemic, the, and not to be political, but some of the political angst nationally, and just the vitriol that I think is pervasive in our society is something that we're really challenged with right now in how to have a caring school community. And so we're really spending a lot of time troubleshooting around this issue, so it's a really important goal for us. Our second goal is around professional practice, as Julianne articulated last time we met, around MCAS. Some of our MCAS scores in mathematics were not where we wanted them to be last year, even though that is a strange year for MCAS testing. We also have spent time in the past year or so really evaluating our curriculum, and we know that our mathematics curriculum was not as current as we wanted it to be. It was not as aligned at the K-12 level as we wanted it to be. There was work that we needed to do. So we were fortunate, again, to have ESER funding that we could use for a major curriculum purchase. And also Julianne secured a state grant to purchase a program called Illustrated Mathematics. So we've been really diving into that program. Some other things that we've done, using ESER funds, we've hired an instructional coach in the area of mathematics. We had an instructional coach in the area of literacy. We still have that person. But mathematics was not something that we had the additional support for. So this person is really pushing into the classrooms, providing support to teachers at the elementary and middle school levels. So that's an important content area that we really need to focus on. The third goal is, of course, around the building project, which is all-encompassing right now. And this year, we're really focused on the smooth transition into the school in January, and then we'll continue to work from January through September on moving the elementary students into that building. But it won't end on September 1st. You know, there's a, the building committee will still exist for at least another year. There are a lot of closeout items, so there's the technical piece. But there's also the building community piece. The school community will be, there will be a major shift for children to go from four schools into one building, and it will be the focus of a lot of our attention, how to build that, that school community within that large building that will have 1,000 students. So that's something that we're working on. And just in case people don't realize, we have a Mountain View consolidation committee that's made up of staff and leadership. And we meet monthly to help navigate some of the events and activities and transitions that we'll be making moving into the new school. And then the final goal is around the development in support of our district-wide strategic plan, which is something that we're working on this year. And it's a community, really wide initiative. And we have a consultant, we're really working on trying to hear from every stakeholder that wants to talk to us. We're doing focus groups, we're doing individual interviews, we're doing surveys, we're doing mornings, evenings. We're trying to just make it as inclusive as we can. They've been meeting with students, they've been doing in-person focus groups during the school day to hear from students at all levels, elementary up through high school, educators, parents, community members. I know they've reached out to the school committee, city council, different representatives in the community that have been involved in the schools, like Jen Bruff, who is part of the ELF community. And so this is really a huge undertaking for us, but it will help us define the priorities for the next five years, which I think is really important, because we want to hear from all the stakeholders. We don't want to be just the drivers of our priorities. We want to hear what the concerns are for everyone. So those are my goals, and I will stop sharing, and I'm happy to go into more detail on any of those goals.
Any questions? Comments, concerns?
No questions, no, you know, outstanding comments. I think they're very, you know, like you, like you mentioned, Dr. Leclair, they're very broad. They definitely encapsulate this idea of this is the district's goals, these are clearly things that everybody needs to be working on. And I think it's important for that leadership to come down from you, and I think they all seem important and reasonable to present tonight.
Thank you.
Hey, so do we have a motion to approve these goals?
Move we approve Dr. Leclair's goals, has presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Crary, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
And Cindy Kuzinski, aye. All right, thank you. So now we are, we are on to our matters for action. But you, Marissa?
Pulling it up here.
That's okay.
All right, so I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 26, 2021 meeting.
I second that.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Crary, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
Motion to approve school payroll dated 11/4/2021 in the amount of $553,695.96.
I second that.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Crary, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Thank you, and Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
Motion to approve the county's payable authorization for payment dated 11/4/2021 in the amount of $741,819.38.
I second that.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Crary, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye. Excellent. Do we have anything under other?
Oh, I have a couple more matters of action, sorry.
Did you? And I, I'm missing one.
It looks like E has been addressed already.
E's been addressed, but I have E here, so apparently the city council voted for a number that is 37 cents different from the budget amount we had originally. Sorry, I see your hand up, Allison. Did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I was just going to try and explain. So we, as a school committee, don't normally approve a budget with cents. We usually round up on a budget, and so the budget that you approved last spring was 37 cents more than what ended up being approved by city council. than what ended up being approved by city council. In trying to reconcile reports between the city and the school department, has wreaked havoc on, over those 37 cents. So um, the request has come from Dale, if this committee would please just um, approve the amount that the city council approved, which ends in 37, in 63 cents.
Very good.
So that, that'll all be aligned.
Okay, so I would make a motion to approve the um, budget as voted by the city council
I second that.
Okay.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Crery, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye. All right, that's it, right? So now, anything under other? This is a shocker, we are so early tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn?
I second that.
Wow, alrighty, go ahead, Maren.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Crery, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Uh, Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
And Cindy Kuzinski, aye, wow, that is probably the shortest one we've had in a very, very, very long time. So we'll see you all in December, and thank you so much, and um, happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Likewise.
Enjoy your holidays.
Bye, folks.
See you in December.